I call the 3:00 PM session of the July 23rd, 2024 meeting of the Henry County Board of Supervisors to order. I'd like to welcome all of our visitors. Remind you, if you want to address the board, you must sign up seven days in advance of any of our regular meetings to be put on the agenda. The county administrator is the contact person for the board. However, the public may address the board under the Agenda Item Matters Presented by the Public later in this meeting that we will take up tonight as Agenda Item Number 14. Again, welcome everyone. Thank you for coming out and participating in your county government. Our first item of consideration from business standpoint today is items of consent, Agenda Item Number Five. What is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the items of consent.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is five with one absent. Jennifer. Agenda Item Number Six, A Consideration of a Resolution Honoring Neil Morris. Mr. Wagner, will you give us just a little bit of background on that, please?
Yes, Mr. Morris came to work in the Assistant's Office on May 1st, 1995, and he, in 2016, was named the Chief Deputy for the Commissioner of Revenue. And Mr. Morris has retired on August 1st after a total of 34 years in public service. And staff has prepared a resolution recognizing his service for your consideration. However, he is not here today, so we will present it at a later date.
I will accept a motion from the board that we adopt the resolution that you've had time to review, and then we will present this later.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we adopt the resolution honoring Neil Morris.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor? It is five with one absent. Jennifer. Agenda Item Number Seven, A Consideration of a Resolution Recognizing the 50th Anniversary of the Carver Road Ruettin Club. Mr. Wagner.
Carver Road Ruettin Club is celebrating its 50th anniversary this month. The Ruettin Club is a pillar of our community, serving as a gathering space for celebrations and community meetings, supporting initiatives to feed the homeless, sponsoring scholarships for our high school graduates, and donating to the community fire and rescue squads. Just to mention a few things. And several members of the Ruettin Club are here today to accept the resolution that you have in your back.
Ms. Buchanan, I believe that you have a resolution for the board's consideration.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, I do. This is a resolution recognizing the 50th anniversary of the Carver Road Ruettin Club. Whereas, the Carver Road Ruettin Club is celebrating its 50th year of offering fellowship, goodwill, and service as commissioned by the Ruettin National Organization. Whereas, the Carver Road Ruettin Club, a trailblazer in its own right, became the first predominantly black Ruettin Club in the United States when the founding 35 community members dedicated themselves to improving the Carver neighborhood of Henry County in July of 1974. And whereas, the Carver Road Ruettin Club embodies the national mission of fellowship by serving as a gathering space for celebrations, hosting other nonprofit and fraternal organizations, and club-sponsored events. And whereas, the Carver Road Ruettin Club embodies the national mission of goodwill by donating to the community's fire and rescue squads, donating to initiatives to feed the homeless, sponsoring scholarships for area high school graduates, and youth 4-H campers. And whereas, Carver Road Ruettin Club embodies the national mission of service by delivering meals and gifts to the neighborhood, elderly, sick, and shut-in, facilitating community meetings, and erecting neighborhood gateway welcome signs. And whereas, the Carver Road Ruettin Club has effectively and significantly improved the overall well-being of the community through a wide variety of efforts and worthy projects. Now therefore, be it resolved on this 23rd day of July 2024, that the Henry County Board of Supervisors congratulates the Carver Road Ruettin Club on its 50th anniversary and wishes them many more years of success and longevity. Signed, Jim Adams, Chairman, Henry County Board of Supervisors. Mr. Chairman, as a fellow Ruettin, I do recognize the Carver Road Ruettin Club, and we need to adopt the resolution recognizing them.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is five with one absent. And we, amongst us, have several that are Ruettin members. I'm going to ask Vice Chairman Bryant and Supervisor Dillard if they will join you, Ms. Buchanan, in presenting this. Ask members of the Carver Road Ruettin Club if you would like to come forward, and we'll have an opportunity to maybe get a picture to capture this moment.
(Music)
Mr. Bryant, I think we'll start off with some comments in regard to this.
I think up here on the front row, right here, we've got three Ruettins in a row, right here, that serves at Ruettins. I know Mr. Adams and Ms. Buchanan has been on the Ruettin Club's board for quite some time, served as presidents, and I've served as presidents at our current board. And I can tell everybody in here that the Ruettin Club is a vital part of every county that they serve. The people and the integrity that they have to work for the community is unbounded. You just can't place a value of money or stuff, the time that these people dedicate towards the community. You know, in this day and time, it seems like people just wants to give money instead of doing anything. They'd rather give money than their labor. But it takes a special person to be a volunteer, especially in the community. And my hat's off to the Carver Ruettin Club. They do an excellent job. They're great people, and they do a great job for the communities. And unfortunately, they're probably like our Ruettin Club, like Black Berries, and like
Horse Pastures.
Horse Pastures Ruettin Club. You know, our membership is declining. I would ask just for the people in here tonight to take a look at yourself and ask you, where would you be if you didn't have volunteers in your life to take care of certain things that you couldn't take care of? So think about getting yourself involved in an organization such as the Ruettin Club, and work for the community, because it's people like us that make sure our community gets, you know, some of the people get the things that they can't afford to get and so forth. We help with that. And so, think about that. You know, I'm sure that Mr. Adams and Ms. Buchanan can tell you that all the time that they have spent working for the Ruettin Club, they can't say anything negative about it. It's probably been a great honor for you to serve there. And so, my hat's off to you, Carver Ruettin Club.
Thank you, Mr. Bryant.
Thank you.
I think all of us could echo those sentiments, but thank you for those comments. And again, Carver Ruettin Club members, thank you for your place in the community. You've made it a wonderful community. And as I spoke with several of you outside, I got to know a number of you in the early 80s, and I can't think of a more hospitable group. They invited me to one of their Christmas dinners, and the kindness that was shown to me there, it was just overwhelming. And we still have a couple of things in our house that was, I don't know if they would have been considered a drawing, door prize, or that type of thing, but I know exactly where they came from. And I remember some of the earlier members, Mr. Samprot, a number of different Spencers, the Keens, just a number of different folks in that club. And how wonderful that you are, not only to your community, but to those that you welcome in from outside of your community. Congratulations to all of you.
Thank you.
Agenda Item Number Eight. At this time, we'll have a monthly report on delinquent tax collection efforts. We have with us County Treasurer Scott Grinstaff. Scott, welcome.
Good afternoon. This is our report as of June 28th, 2024. Personal property collection, we collected 92% of the 23 personal property taxes during the month of June. We collected $163,469. Real estate collection as of June 28th, we collected 94.40% of the 23 real estate taxes. During the month, we collected $80,368. Since January 1st, TACS has collected $506,643. And debt set off this month on July 16th, we received another $17,000. That pushes our total for the year up to $382,728. And so far, in the month of July, we've had eight DMV stops.
Does anyone have any questions with Mr. Grinstaff at this time?
All right, thank you. Agenda Item Number Nine, We'll Take Up Financial Matters, 9A, An Additional Appropriation Referencing Asset Forfeiture Funds for the Commonwealth Attorney's Office. Mr. Wagner.
Commonwealth's Attorney Andrew Nestor is asking the board to approve an additional appropriation of $16,456 from state asset forfeiture funds to cover travel expenses for the attorneys in his office and to purchase office furniture.
All right. With that, what action would the board like to take in regard to this?
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to approve the additional appropriation of $16,456 from the state asset forfeiture funds for travel expenses and office furniture.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is five with one absent. Jennifer. 9B, An Additional Appropriation Referencing Justice Assistance Grant, now this JAG grant, and asset forfeiture funds for the sheriff's office. Mr. Wagner.
Sheriff Wayne Davis is asking the board to appropriate grant funds in the amount of $61,215 received from the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistant Grant Program. The grant will be used to purchase various investigative and law enforcement equipment. The grant does require a 25% match, and to cover the match, Sheriff Davis is asking the board to approve an additional appropriation, $20,405 from the state asset forfeiture funds. Sheriff Davis is here. Should you have questions?
In regard to this, what is the desire of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the appropriation of $61,215 from the Justice Assistant Grant and $20,405 from the state asset forfeiture funds, as requested. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is five with one absent. Jennifer. 9C, An Additional Appropriation Referencing Grant Funds for the Sheriff's Office. Mr. Wagner.
Sheriff Davis is asking the board to approve an additional appropriation of $11,381 received from the Virginia State HEAT Grant Program. According to Sheriff Davis, the grant will provide funding to purchase equipment intended to assist with locating stolen vehicles and investigating other criminal activities.
In regard to the appropriation of these grant funds, what is the desire of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the additional appropriations of $11,381 received from the Virginia State Police HEAT program.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is five with one absent. Jennifer. 9D, An Award of Contract and Transfer of Funds Referencing Replacement Vehicle for the Sheriff's Office. Mr. Wagner.
Sheriff Davis is asking the board to award a contract in the amount of $50,995 to Sheehy Ford of Richmond, Virginia to purchase a 2024 Ford F-250 XL four-wheel drive truck for use by the Animal Services Division. Funding for this purchase and the associated equipment is included in the FY '25 budget, but it is in the Law Enforcement Cost Center, so staff is asking the board to approve the transfer of a total of $68,750 to the Animal Services Cost Center. Pricing for the vehicle is based on the Virginia Sheriff's Association Vehicle Procurement Program, which has been approved by our purchasing department.
In regard to this award of contract and transfer of funds, what motion would the board like to make?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to award a contract to Sheehy Ford for $50,995 to purchase a 2024 Ford F-250 truck, and to approve the transfer of $68,750 from the Law Enforcement Cost Center to the Animal Services Cost Center. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is five with one absent. Jennifer. 9E, An Award of Contract Referencing Replacement Vehicles for the Sheriff's Office. Mr. Wagner.
Sheriff Davis is asking the board to award a contract for $86,000 to Nelson Ford in Martinsville to purchase two Ford Mustang GT Coupe. Sheriff Davis has stated the vehicles will be assigned through the Community Engagement Unit within the Law Enforcement Division of the Sheriff's Office. Following a competitive bid process by our purchasing department, Nelson Ford submitted the lowest bid and was selected for the purchase. Funding for vehicles is included in the Sheriff's Fiscal Year '25 budget, and the sheriff is here. Should you have any questions?
In regard to awarding of this contract for replacement vehicles, what is the action the board desires to take?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to award a contract to Nelson Ford in Martinsville for $86,000 to purchase two Ford Mustang GT Coupe's for the sheriff's office.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yeah, just want to thank the Sheriff's Department for this and, you know, getting someone local. I know that some of it's about bidding, but glad to see that somebody local got this contract, because there's some things we've talked about, having more of those contracts, you know, being approved for a local folk and keeping that money right here in Henry County. And then I want to ask the sheriff, how's he going to determine who's going to get those two vehicles?
One thanks for hearing with us today. So, one thing I'd like to say about these vehicles, the estimated cost of the new Ford Explorer is $47,000. So, we actually got these Mustangs cheaper than we ordered a big police pursuit package Explorer for. So, there is some cost savings there. However, we've had a community policing presence, but we are establishing Community Engagement Unit. So, these two deputies' sole focus is to engage the youth of our community, attend nearly every community event across Martinsville and Henry County, recruitment, not just here locally, but regionally as well. And we truly believe that these cars will be a conversation piece, a conversation starter that may help recruit younger people into our profession, as well as engage other youth in our community to approach our law enforcement officers and establish bonds and relationships. And I believe that by having these vehicles, if we establish just one relationship with the youth or recruit one employee, then we've accomplished our goal with them. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Sheriff Davis, are these going to be subdued?
They will be marked with our ghost marking package similar to what you've seen on a couple of the Tows.
Black, I mean gray, dark gray?
They are sealed. We'd just like the reminder of our fleet.
Okay.
All right, thank you. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion or questions or comments? All in favor? It is five with one absent. Jennifer. Agenda Item 9F, A Consideration of Revisions to the Henry County Investment Policy. Mr. Wagner.
As part of our transition and investment counts from American National Bank to Atlantic Union Bank, we were made aware of options to better diversify our investment portfolio. For this reason, the county's Investment Committee requests the board consider minor revisions to the Henry County Investment Policy. The proposed revision's aimed to maximize investment returns while remaining within the parameters established by the Commonwealth of Virginia. And the proposed changes are highlighted in the policy document, can you copy?
With that, and there's, you know, 15 or so pages of this that the board's had the opportunity to review as part of its working papers, what is the action the board would like to take in adopting the revisions?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to adopt the revisions to the investment policy as presented. Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is five with one absent. Jennifer. That takes us to Agenda Item Number 10, Informational Items. I will begin by taking comments from the board, beginning with Dr. Cobbler.
Nothing at this time. Thank you.
Mr. Dillard.
Yes, I do want to bring up one thing. I know, you know, Dale, we talked about with the school system, we talked about categorical versus lump sum, and at one point, you know, we weren't prepared to vote on that. I know we did vote at the last meeting about the amount of money we were going to give the school system. But would you briefly just recap the categorical versus the lump sum?
Sure. So, as it is now, this board appropriates money to the school system by category. The Code of Virginia gives a couple of options for local authorities when they're appropriating funds to the school board. They can do it as we're doing it, what's called categorical funding. Another method is called lump sum funding, and that's pretty much when you give them a total dollar amount of the, you know, the top end of the budget, and they can put it in whichever one of the categories that they see most appropriately. And then there's a third category, and quite honestly, I can't remember what that third category is, but it's more restrictive than the first two. So, the Code of Virginia, Section 22.1-115, says the money has to be in the categories. Whether you give it to them appropriated by category, or you give it to them in lump sum, the schools are required to report it for auditing purposes by category. So, for example, if they move money from instruction to transportation, then that would be noted in the audit at the end of the year. So, the categories, I'm recollecting from my memory, because I didn't have my notes with Mr. Here. Instruction is probably the largest one that school systems deal with. That's personnel cost of teachers, providing instruction, classroom materials, all those things that go along with that. There's also some things that we call capital, like maybe a smart board that might would go into a classroom. All those can come out of instruction. But then add another category called administration attendance and health, and that's kind of exactly what it says, the cost of administration for principals for providing health services to the children. Pupil transportation, which is a big cost in the county, operations and maintenance for maintaining all the facilities, replacing a water line if it breaks, those things. Food services, technology, facilities, I think I left one out, but those are the big ones.
And yes, the big difference is, if it's categorical, and they want to move it from one category to another, they have to come before us to get us to vote to approve that. If it's lump sum, they can do that within their own school board meetings. Is that the, in gist, is that the major difference in the two?
Yes, you summed that up very well, with the exception that it's less than $50,000. Your appropriation resolution allows the county administrators to act off on a transfer of less than $50,000.
Okay. And I do know that, you know, that was a discussion, and we are, I like to say, partners with the school system, and it's one thing that we did talk about. And so, you know, with that, I think that we do at least owe justice to having that conversation and having a vote on that. So, I would like to make a motion to fund the school system through lump sum.
I hear a motion. Is there a second? Is there a second? With there not being a second, that drops the plate.
Yes, sir. And that's, you know, pretty much what I expected, but I do feel like, you know, we're partners with the school system, and, you know, that is something that I know they have a concern about, being that there's basically zero dollars in their facilities category. And if they have issues, they want to be able to quickly move that. And I do hope that at some point down the road, we can have conversation, because I think it comes down to whether we trust the leaders of our school system, and are they going to do what they're supposed to do with their funding, or do we feel that they have to come to us in order for us to manage and gauge, you know, what they do. And I think, you know, if we're giving somebody 100, or how much ever money they're getting, you know, with their budget, you know, we have to have some trust in that, that they're using those funds properly, the funds are being used, what they're allocated for. Because if we don't trust that, then I think there's some other conversations versus categorical versus lump sum. We need to have conversations about, you know, personnel and, you know, making sure that, you know, we do trust them. But, you know, I don't want to get into a spiel about that. Only other thing I want to mention is, I would like to know, and I know that Lee is not here, but how much money we have in our unsafe structures, accounts, just so we can, you know, know what options we have there. But also, I'm noticing there are a lot of homes that are not declared unsafe, but they're eyesores. And would like to know what our options are to get those homes down, so that communities can, you know, not have these homes with all the trees and grass and things like that, you know. But if they're not unsafe, I know that we can't always legally force them, but would like to know what our options are. And if you, you know, and if we don't get that answer today, that's
I would defer to your county attorney for that information.
Okay.
We're doing all we can within the scope of the law, the county ordinances allow us to do now. If we need to change that, then our county attorney would have to provide some guidance on it.
Okay.
And I'll just briefly comment with what Mr. Dillard said. I don't think it's a matter of not trusting. I think it's a matter of responsibility. And I view it as a board member, because close to 70% of our budget goes to the school system, we have a responsibility to our citizens, you know, where some of this money is going and how it's being transferred. And so, that's my viewpoint. It's not a matter of trust, it's a matter of taking responsibility as a board member to know somewhat what's going on with 70% of the tax money that's coming in.
And I agree, but I also feel that if we're going to, in most instances, approve that and have a six-zero vote, you know, then we publicly trust them, but it's still them coming to us. But, you know, it's a board decision, and I did want to make sure that that came up. So, because the school system has asked it on several occasions, we have yet to vote on it. I think we started back in May, so we had two or three meetings, and didn't want to at least put that up to vote, and it, you know, and majority wins.
Anything else, Ms. Buchanan?
No, sir.
Mr. Bryant?
No, sir.
Rather than my comments, I'm on, and she doesn't know that I'm on call, but I'm going to ask Commissioner Revenue if she would come and give us an update on some recent training that you all have taken.
I was recently training last week myself and four other staff members. We took our first AAO appraisal class. It is a certified class. It's extremely important. It's a very difficult class. Took it on Zoom all last week. We got some passing last Friday. A few of us did pass the test, so that's very important. We have a better understanding now of, you know, just going to a resident center praising it, how to come up with it, depreciation, appeal process, everything from the beginning to the end. So, that was very beneficial for us. We have a class coming up this week. We went into an audit and business class as well. So, we've been training. Everybody's been learning. Everybody's been doing right on their testing. So, yeah, our reassessment is looking, looking back. So we have our reassessment, just looking back.
Can you stay at the podium just for a moment? And I know last month, you all made a motion to have a public hearing related to setting the reassessment, and I think the county attorney and commissioner may have some information on why that's not on the agenda.
And we, so I assume, because we have never changed the assessment timing since I've been the attorney, I assumed it was a county ordinance, it is not. So there will be no need to have a public hearing, you can do it by a simple vote and resolution. And I discussed with the Commissioner Revenue that once we've gone through the process of determining how the reassessment we done, it will almost definitely, there will have to be an outside vendor participating in it. So once we know who that will be, and go through the process to select them, and the board awards a contract to pay them, we'll set the date at the same, do it in one sitting, the whole event. And also, between now and then, the county administrator and I will bring some options. The code basically says you can have reassessments everywhere between annually, every year, and every six years. So we're going to, we'll bring forward some options or recommendations.
Yeah, and I do want to, just in case I didn't clear it up last time, is, you know, with the reassessment, what we are asking an outside firm to do will be just our industrial and commercial, and our tech. So we will handle all our residential in-house, we'll handle our field process, and so these classes and stuff that we've been going to, we do have some meetings scheduled with other localities to go and meet with them to see what they're doing, to learn a little bit more. So that's all we're going to be asking, you know, for an outside person to do. It's just our industrial.
Ms. Harrison, thank you for at least providing us with some information. I think last month and this month, it goes without saying that we're very interested in the process and it moving along, because it's vital to county finances, it's vital to the fairness of assessments. And I do appreciate your involvement in the community. It didn't stop on election day. I see that you're out and in the community, getting the same feedback from individuals, not in just one area of the county, but all over the county, and I do appreciate that.
Thank you, I appreciate it. And Mr. Chairman, also appreciate you bringing Commissioner up as well, and I don't know, Mr. Wagner, how appropriate it would be to actually get her to give us a very, a brief report or an update as we move along at each board meeting, not to pack the agenda with things, or talk about things that, that maybe there won't be any order of business, but specifically like that, just if you have anything that you can provide to us in terms of an update, sort of like a treasurer does, if that would be appropriate for the agenda. I was going to ask about that. But Jim, Mr. Chairman, now that you've brought her up, I didn't know, you know, if that would be appropriate or not, maybe something else to talk about in terms of putting Commissioner on the agenda also.
Well, it's certainly not an issue to put her on the agenda, and I wouldn't want it to be something that just show up and say, I have nothing to report this month. It may be more of a, as you have things that you think the board and the community would be interested in, if you would contact county administrator's office, just like anyone else, at least seven days in advance, so that we can get you on the agenda. In that way, you'd say, you know, I do have something to report that will, you know, at least update the board, and certainly even without it becoming board meeting day, communication between county administration, or if you see any board member, any given time period, certainly that communication will be well received.
Okay, yes, sir. And I don't mind, you know, if they have as much as possible, and I try to have as much communication as I can, when new stuff come in, you know, I try to communicate that to anybody when we have it. So I welcome any conversation, any discussion at any time, come to the podium, or any meetings in the office, shoot me out in public, wherever, wherever, I'll be happy to help. Because we do, we have to do this reassessment together, we have to work together, we're partners, and I do appreciate all the support that we've gotten, and everybody, you know, wishing us well, and, you know, sharing us on, and office staff really appreciates it. So it's going to be a long year and a half or so for us, but I think we can, we can get it done. So I appreciate letting you speak, and I'll work you all do as well, to support us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Mr. Chair, before you go to Mr. Wagner, I would like to ask Officer Roberson, if he would kind of give us some update on how it's going. I know at one point, we were looking to get an additional staff member to work with you. If you have any kind of updates, how that's going, your workload, and the amount of requests that you're getting, and that type of stuff.
Well, the trash calls haven't slowed down, but the grass calls have slowed down some due to the drought. You know, it's not so many deep mowing right now, but we're getting called up, you know, now that the school's out, the SROs has been helping me some when they can, so I've got a little help there, helping answer a few calls when I get swamped, but it's doing a lot better. The trash calls and the car calls are staying the same, but the grass calls are slowing up some because of the drought. But if it starts getting rain, it starts growing, it's real fast again, it's going to pick back up.
Okay, appreciate it.
I don't have anything else. Mr. Wagner?
Just one item, I'd like to introduce you to the newest member of the leadership team for Henry County. This Crystal Ferguson is the new Assistant Finance Director. She comes to us from, with service in the public sector and the private sector. She holds a master's science degree in accounting with concentrations in auditing and financial reporting. So welcome, Crystal, glad to have you on the team.
With that, that takes us to agenda item number 11, if someone will cite the items allowed by the Code of Virginia and the Freedom of Information Act to go into closed meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I move we go into closed meeting under 2.23711A1 for discussion of appointees to the Roanoke River Basin Association, 2.23711A7 for discussion of pending legal matters, 2.23711A3 for discussion of the acquisition disposal of real estate, and 2.23711A5 for discussion of as-yet unannounced industries.
I'll accept the second. Second. All in favor? It's five with one absent. See you all upstairs in five minutes. Now, closed meeting, on a motion by Ms. Buchanan, and a second by Mr. Dillard. Mr. Powell, will you pull the board?
Yes, sir. Board members, to the best of your knowledge, only public business managers lawfully exempted from public meeting requirements under the Code of Virginia, section 223711, we're rehearing this discussion, for considering this closing meeting. How do you vote, Mr. Bryant?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Bryant?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Buchanan?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Bill?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Bryant, I believe that you have a board of parliament for its consideration.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I make a motion that we appoint Michael Ward to the Roanoke River Basin Association for a period of one year, expiring in August 31st of 2025.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor? It's five with one absent. Jennifer, Mr. Wagner, do you have any items of consideration before we take a recess?
Yes, sir.
Board members, do you have any that we need to consider? We will stand in recess and begin promptly at 6:00 PM. I'll call the 6:00 PM session of the July 23rd, 2024 meeting of the Henry County Board of Supervisors back to order from our recess from earlier this afternoon. Like to welcome all of our visitors. Remind you, if you want to address the board, you must sign up seven days in advance of any of our regular meetings to be put on the agenda. The county administrator is the contact person for the board. However, the public may address the board under the agenda item, matters presented by the public that will take up in tonight's meeting as agenda item number 14. Again, welcome, everyone. Thank you for coming out and participating in your county government. Our first agenda item of consideration is agenda item number 12, presentation of the Community Connected Citizen Award. Mr. Wagner, will you give us some brief detail on this, and then we're going to ask Dr. Cobbler to provide further detail.
Yep. The Community Connected Citizen Award, also known as the Triple C Award, recognizes senior county residents who selflessly dedicate their time and energy into making our community a better place. The Triple C Award is designed to recognize the everyday contribution of our citizens. Small acts of public service have culminated to have a tremendous impact. These acts deserve to be commended, and more importantly, to be recognized. And Dr. Cobbler has a presentation today.
Thank you. And as a testament to this group, you can see how they have come together just with this award process also, in support of each other, and support of Reed Creek, and specifically the Basset area. This is the GBAC, it's called the Greater Basset Area Community. And tonight, we want to recognize them for their outstanding contribution and accomplishments to our area in Reed Creek, and again, in Basset specifically. And it's interesting, because I had thought about it, and since I've been elected, I've been going to the meetings where I can attend, and it's amazing, and I just sit there, I know, I've started the megaphone moments, and I just sit there, and I think, this is amazing, someone else other than just us, just us in Basset, needs to know the great work in Henry County they're doing. And then Ms. Buchanan had an award very, very much like this, and it's my understanding that you had already started the concept, we just need to award and recognize individuals or groups doing this outstanding work in our community. So that had already been set up by Ms. Buchanan, I thought, perfect, then we'll bring our group. The Greater Basset Area Community is a group that meets once a month on behalf of the beautification of Basset and other things they do. And I would like to, before we go down and take pictures and everything, I'd like for Matt, Matt Davis, to come and just give us, please, just a brief synopsis of some of the projects and work that your group does and is doing, right there at that podium. Yep.
Good evening. So Greater Basset Area Community, the GBAC, has been together now for almost 15 years. We started by wanting to be neighbors, working for the benefit of our community. We took a look at what was going on in the community, and decided that there were some things that, as individuals, we would like to try to change. So there was some issues with beautification, there was some mowings and plantings, and picking up trash in the area, so that we could beautify the Ferrystone Park Highway quarter there. And then we started getting involved into community marketing, and we were instrumental in being part of the Basset train station as it got renovated. And we would do free music events. We started off at the old Basset High School, we moved across the river to the Historical Center, and now we've been doing some free music events behind Basset Industries at their picnic shelter next to the river. We wanted to just bring, show the prowess that these people have of their community by inviting people to it. We've started a cruise in, now it's working into its nice season, growing quite large, we're very proud of that, as we've heard that it's one of the largest ones, and we give quite a bit of compliments. And there's a good group of people that have put a lot of time and effort into it. The mowings and plantings, as you know, those are things that constantly need work, you know, it's, mother nature doesn't stand still, so we're constantly out there. And then we have a little bit of help given us work by just the, some people that are looting, considering, and trash gets out there, but we happily pick it up because we want our place to look much better. The free music events is just to try to bring people together, come out, enjoy a nice evening along the river, very picturesque, very beautiful, and we've got talented musicians in the air that come out and give us a nice time out there. This group recently lost one of its dear members, we affectionately refer to him as the founding father, Smokey Pegram. It was initially his will to bring some people together and do this, and so tonight, you know, we appreciate this recognition, like to accept it in his honor. We've got his family members here as well, so we just want them to know how much he made us.
Okay, very good, thank you. For picture purposes, it's okay if we take a few minutes to figure out how to get everybody that can and will, will just congregate up here, and then some of us that need to stay down there will, and see how we can, with Brandon's help, try to get everybody in the photograph. And then I would also invite the board to stand wherever you would like to, or however you'd like to be in the group as well, just make it a huge Henry County Community Award. Okay?
Sounds good.
So y'all coming up, we'll get Brandon to organize.
Get the tone up here.
Yes, everybody, everybody. Yes, we'll figure it out.
No, no, that's you guys, you like the guys. I'll be fine. I only have six voters. I only have six voters, Dan.
Is there any, if you can get onto the stage, as many on stage as possible, or they have to get something up the ramp a little more.
can stand down at the steps. Like on the, literally on the steps. Yep. Anybody else who's willing to come stand on the steps? Well, who on behalf would like to accept this for the picture for Smokey? Okay. Is it Brandon?
It's Smokey.
Yeah, it's okay.
One more, sorry. One town, Dan, one works good up here.
He's under 10%.
I'm begging everyone to look my way. Ready, three, two, one.
Should we look here? Look right here.
Did you get my big waist?
It's a good problem, too many people.
I know, I said, hey.
It's really nice.
Mm-hmm.
You're good. Brandon, you good?
Were you talking about the work that they do, or what's his part?
I realize that some of you may choose to leave, but if you do so, please do so respectfully. We will continue with the meeting at this time. Agenda item number 13 will take up general highway matters. We have with us Lisa Hughes from VDU. Lisa, welcome.
Thank you. Now you have some items on the agenda, your resolutions of support for the Smart Scale project. So if you have any questions about those projects, I'll be glad to try to answer them.
Okay, in regard to this resolution and support of the Smart Scale application, the board has this, and has had time to review it as part of your working papers. And we're doing a little safety improvement project at Axton Elementary School that we've started and hopefully get it finished here shortly and definitely before school starts. And that's all I have.
Does anyone have anything for Ms. Hughes at this time?
Just, I guess just a comment and my mama told me to say this, so I better say. You know, when you guys put the gravel down, she seemed to think that the tar is only going on the outside, so the gravels are very loose on the inside and it's causing issues and problems. So when you do that, use that strategy, I guess if more of the road could be covered with tar, few of those gravels will get loose and I guess they'll, and I see this young lady shaking her head, so that may be something across the board, but you know, like I said, my mama told me to make sure I mention that tonight.
All right. We've been doing a lot of tar gravel patching and surface treatment, tar and gravel, you know, the whole road. So we've done a lot of tar and gravel lately and we're the, I think it's been so hot, you know, the last couple of weeks that we did have a lot of loose gravel. So if you know any place, let me know. We've had to come back and sweep several roads.
Okay. Definitely, you know, because I think it's been a while since you've been down to sand level, but still a lot of loose gravel down there and that would be great.
All right. Does anyone else have any items for Ms. Hughes?
Thank you.
Thank you. That takes us to Agenda Item 14, Matters Presented by the Public. No one signed up specifically for Matters Presented by the Public, but we will make a call for anyone from the public that wishes to address the board. Do we have anyone from the public that wishes to address the board? I see one hand and before you come, I need to read a brief policy statement. This is a time for public comment. We welcome your participation in tonight's meeting. We're here to listen to you. Care to address the board, come to the podium, state your name, your subject matter, and the district in which you live. By coming to the podium, you've agreed that you will exhibit respect for the board, the staff, and its members. You will receive the same consideration from the board. Please try to keep your presentation to no more than five minutes. So I saw your hand, if you would like to come forward and state your name, please.
Yes, sir. My name's Donald Gilk. I'm from Collinsville District on Halifax Drive. We are here to talk about problems we've had over the past 25, 30 years with some apartments and the conditions that we have to, that the people have to live in that are renting those apartments. I mean, these things are horrible. They're not even fit for animals to live in. They're so rundown and so I placed some, I've got pictures here. And we met with the county back in 2008 and the county told us to give him time to get it fixed up, but it's been 16 years now and they're just getting worse and worse all the time, 16. March of 2000, March 19th, 2024, there was a letter sent out and I'm going to present these to y'all. These are one of the letters.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
We see that staff has one of those letters down there.
Yes, yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
And I'm going to pass these. These are some of the pictures that we've taken of the apartments.
All right, if you'll hand those to me, I'll pass them down.
And you can pass them around.
Yes, sir.
You can see the conditions that they're in. And people living in them never. Small, there's children that live in these apartments and the conditions that these apartments in. Us as citizens on the road have concerns for the children, their welfare of living in these are horrible conditions. The owner of the apartments look like he has no concern but just taking their money for the rent and not fixing them up. It's been 16 years and very little improvements have been done to the apartments. We had to get the state and the county to come in to get the driveway fixed on them, which Ms. Hughes can testify to that the, I mean, there was ditches four foot deep and the rescue squad got stuck in it.
Please address Ford.
Well, it had like a four foot ditch and the mud was running out in the roads on both ends. It got so bad, they couldn't even get in that. And he's not taking any concerns on fixing it up. And this is, this is what we're looking at. This running all of our property values down, have gone down since that because of people don't want to come over and buy anything. There's a house beside of it and 64 house facts. We've been trying to get the grass, somebody to cut the grass, the lady passed away back around 2012 and last year it never was like. The grass over there now is up chest deep. Us as neighbors and citizens on the road, we try to keep it cut out in front. And we're at the end of that property and the first turn in to the apartments is a ditch that runs under the road. Where he doesn't keep it clean around the apartments, it fills that ditch up, then everything from the apartments washes and washes into part of my yard and a neighbor's yard and VDOTs had to come out there two or three times and get dump truck loads of stuff out of these people, out of their yards and out of front of my house, from our house, from where the place had just kept up. Y'all can see the pictures of, and this is one of the worst places I've seen in Henry County. I rode around Henry County, you can go over around Ms. Buchanan's district, O'Grave Horse Pasture, it's beautiful. The trees is all cut back, it's a map, which come over on Rock Street. You go to pull out from Halifax on the Colonial Drive, you can't even see the cars coming down because the trees have grown over so big out, you can't even see to pull out. And our street is a small, narrow street, which should be a one-way street. It's so narrow, two cars can't even pass each other. And we've got these apartments out here and it's so much more traffic on the street. And I'm looking to see if there's anything the county can do to help us in getting these apartments fixed up, to give these people a better place to live. If we as citizens and the county can show that they're fixing them up and maybe these people can get a step up in life. It'll make them feel better, at least they got somewhere they can live. You ain't got rats and roaches and bats and all this stuff, holes, big holes in it, roofs, water running through. They're just horrible looking. I mean, y'all need to come over and see, excuse me, y'all need to come over and look at it and see, would you want that on your street? Would you want your neighbors and your fellow citizens living in something like that? That's what I'm looking at. Not with the way they are and all, it brings a crime into it. And the sheriff, he's helped us a lot. Wayne Davis has been great with us on trying to help calm down the criminal aspect of it. But we need help from the county to try to see if we can pressure the landowner, the apartment owner, to fix them up. If you can't fix them up, I mean, it's had 16 years since the last time the county addressed to him, talked to him. And here it is, they talked to him March the 19th, one whole side of the apartments has gone off and water was running in the apartment. He just puts aside enough, he just patches up, he don't fix, he just patches. And he's trying to do it all himself. And it's no way they'll ever get, they'll ever get fixed up. And how many more years are we going to have to live with it like that and have to look at it under these conditions? And all we're doing is asking to see what y'all can do to help us out under this situation. If there's anything that the county can do. And I thank y'all for the time and appreciate all your help and stuff that we can get in this matter.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Does anyone else wishing to address the board under Matters Presented by the Public? I see two other hands. I saw his hand first and then we'll take yours. Yes, sir. Please come to the podium.
Good afternoon.
And state your name for the record, please. Thank you.
My name's Rick Anderson. Been in Martinville, Henry County all my life, lived in Collinsville District since 1997. This is pretty much on the same subject that Mr. Gilbert talked about. We've got 45 signatures of people that live in the general area that totally agree with being Mr. Gilbert, that would love to see something done. I think you still have the pictures. There is one picture, it's actually apartment 16. It's actually got a hole in the roof about like this. Very large, several windows busted out. And the other concern, I've spoke with Sheriff Davis several times, and he is, I think the time goes back about 15 years, that there's approximately 2,100 calls to these apartments alone. Everything from shootings, stabbing, domestic. We actually have a lady that lives directly across from the apartments and actually have a shop door pulled on from those apartments. And that's not scary enough. There's actually been dead bodies found in these apartments that probably was in there a week or two. So you can imagine how bad they were. Ken Lozaro, who owns these apartments, does little to nothing. We've contacted him, he says, I don't live there, they're my problem. So it's very obvious Ken Lozaro is not going to do anything. He lives in Chap Moss, very nice neighborhood. He does not put any money back into these apartments. I live very close to these apartments and I've actually killed 25 rats in just a year. Several of the neighbors that live in the general area, they have their problems with cockroaches. The neighbors are even telling you how bad the cockroaches are there. I think Charles has even been there and I think he's even observed how bad the cockroaches were. These people need help and they're not getting it from Ken Lozaro. I think the board needs to step up if possible. Encourage him maybe a little stronger that he needs to step up and do something. Another house that's very close, they can't keep up with the rat problems. And certain locations you can ride through at night, you can see light coming from the apartments and it shouldn't be that way. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. And yes, ma'am, I saw your hand next.
Good evening, everyone on the board. Thank you for your time. I have a quick question. My name is Loriann Allen. I live in the Reed Creek District on Ferris Mill Road and I just had a question of when could we expect internet to reach our home?
Again, this is to take comment. As far as questions, we will have to wait until we receive all comment and perhaps someone else from the board or staff can comment on that.
That's just fine.
So it was just basically one question?
Just the one question, no presentation.
And if it's not an answer that's known tonight, if you will leave your contact information with Mr. Wagner, I'm certain someone will get back to you.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Are there others wishing to address the board under Matters Presented by the Public? Seeing and hearing no indication as such, we will move on. And our next agenda item is adjournment, but there was an indication by at least one board member that they would like to offer comment. Mr. Bryant, you had indicated to me that you'd like to offer comment.
I believe this apartment that they've got, Halifax Drive, of course, you know, I inherited this problem when I come on board and I've been working on it ever since I've been on the board. But it hasn't been easy. It really hasn't. We started off on this apartment complex as a drug light area, basically like we did for the Stolt Road Apartments that we had there, which we had unamountable calls and stuff like that from the Stolt Road Apartments, which you had your share in Halifax Apartments Knock on wood, since Sheriff Davis has took over it, that has dropped considerably. Your drug light area has dropped very considerable. The calls are nowhere near like they was back, you know, several years ago. They've dropped so much now that we really can't designate that as a drug light area anymore because the work that Sheriff Davis and his office has done. Sheriff Davis, you want to comment?
You can put it up.
Okay. So we've almost knocked the drug light out. So I went to our administration, our attorney, Mr. Law, and what else could we look at? Well, unsafe structure was the next thing to go to, look unsafe structure. Of course, you've got the pictures here, we looked at the pictures, I've seen, I've been to that place, I don't know how many times. You as a group don't know how many times I have drove by that place and not even told y'all that I've been by there and walked around that place. You just don't know it. That apartment that's got the roof in it, the hole in the roof and the foundation is lean, there's firewalls built in between the apartments that separates that apartment complex from the other apartment complexes. Because the fact that nobody's living in those apartment complexes, he can board them up and they don't have to be torn down. I can, you can only do what the law allows us to do. Unfortunately, sometimes we may have to try to figure out how we can change these laws and get these things done. But the building inspector went out, our head building inspector went out and inspected departments and said that the apartments was not considered as unsafe structure, even though they look horrendous and look terrible, they're not considered as unsafe structure. There again, I'm going back to the fact that I have to rely on the people that does this in the county. So that took basically the unsafe structure for now out of the picture. So we come up with the nuisance ordinance. Eyeless, sore, looking bad, so forth, health issues like people getting sick, diseases and stuff like that. But the health department says, in order for that to work that way, you've got to bring us evidence of people that are having issues like cancer, rashes, all kinds of sorts of things that they're getting from the apartments. We can't get that. Number one, Ken Lozaro won't let us go into the apartments because we can't enter into each one of the individual apartments to inspect them. The tenants in the apartment won't let our county apartment complexes, he can board them up and they don't have to be torn down. And I, I can, I can, we can only do what the ball allows us to do. Unfortunately, sometimes we may have to try to figure out how we can change these laws and get these things done. But the building inspector went out and, our head building inspector went out and inspected departments and said that the apartments was not considered as unsafe structure. Even though they look horrendous and look terrible, they're not considered as unsafe I might, there again, I'm going back to the fact that I have to rely on the people that does this in the county. So that took basically the unsafe structure for now out of the picture. So we, we come up with the nuisance ordinance. Eyeless sore, looking bad, so forth. Health issues like people getting sick, diseases and stuff like that. But the health department says, in order for that to work that way, you've got to bring us evidence of, of people that are having issues like cancer, uh, rashes, all kinds of sorts of things, uh, that they're getting from the apartments. We can't get that. Number one, Ken Lozaro won't let us go into the apartments because we can't enter into each one of the individual apartments to inspect them. The tenants in the apartment won't let our county inspector go inside the apartments to inspect them. We don't have fiscal law enough to allow us to go into these apartments to inspect them. You know, I mean, you may look at me and say, "Mr. Bryant's not doing anything to help this situation here at these apartments." Mr. Bryant's been here on the board for so long and he hasn't did a thing for us. But I can tell you and I hope that my supervisor would back you up that there's not hardly a board meeting, I don't bring this up, that I don't try to push to get these things done. Unfortunately, it lies a lot on Mr. Lyles, George Lyles, our attorney's shoulders. Uh, I'm not trying to put it on him by no means, but he is, he is our lawyer for the county and he has been working on this a lot. He has been. I know that, uh, Sheriff David wanted to speak, but I would like to ask, uh, our attorney here to give you just an update on where we're at with these apartments. This, this is a nightmare for me. I know it's a nightmare for you because you've got to look at it every morning. But I am a person that likes things clean and neat. I've been that way all my life. If you look at my house, my property, my store property, everything's mowed, everything's got a place for it to be, everything looks neat. Unfortunately, the world's not like that. Now, people don't think like we think. So we try to do what we can to do it. But Mr. Lyles, do you have a little information that you could put out on there?
Well, I mean, you, in summary, we have a small toolbox to address these issues. And as far as the physical nature of the structure, if, um, you know, the way the code of Virginia is set up, this county designates a building official and it's that person's duty to be trained and licensed and authorized to enforce building regulations. And this matter, these pictures have been shown to him. He has inspected the property to the, much as he legally can from the exterior. And he has said they are not unsafe structures. They do not meet the definition of an unsafe structure. So we, we can't proceed under the unsafe structure. The drug blight, uh, you know, I, I spoke to the sheriff today and, and he still says he, he does not have evidence of illegal drug sales or use on the property that would sustain a drug blight further proceeding. And, and the letter was brought out here and we, I, I, I did go and meet with Mr. Lozaro and tell him to do these things, uh, to alleviate the drug blight. And, and unlike with the Villa Heights where that owner refused to, um, to, he just refused to do anything and, and, and he didn't resist. So ultimately, we were able to, um, tear down the drug blight there. I mean, Mr. Lozaro denied there was drug blight, said he would take some of the measures that were in those letters, but, but ultimately, if we want to proceed against him further, we have to show there's drug activity. We have to link some of the, the building issues and behavior to that drug activity. And we, there's not evidence to do that. Um, so that's why we can't proceed under that. And then the nuisance, ultimately, the remedy for the nuisance must be signed off on by the health director. Um, we don't have a local health director, but the one for our area. So it's going to be an M.D. from somewhere. And he's going to want to see a linkage to physical health that we can show from the condition of the buildings. And I, I know the neighbors, and, and I'm not disputing the facts of this, that roaches would run everywhere and rats, but you can imagine, you know, trying to convince someone that, well, they're all coming from this location. I, I mean, this is going to be difficult and no one is reporting being sick and physically by it. So I, I, I think there is not sufficient evidence at this time to proceed under the nuisance ordinance. So these are the very limited tools we have in this, and, and we're like most of rural Virginia. These are the tools we have to address blight. Um, and our, our, our problems, I, I know they're very troublesome to the people who live around it and have to deal with it, but they're not unique to our county. This is dealt with throughout rural Virginia. There's other places in our county that, that have these issues and we, we, each case is individual. We try to apply these ordinances to them and, um, and bring a resolution to it. And sometimes we're successful and, and in this case, we haven't been at this point. I, I'm, I would say I'm going, you know, I would, I would like to meet with the residents and tell them some private options they might have and explain that to them. I, I don't have them tonight and I don't want to discuss them where other people might hear them. But I, I would just say I would still be open to meet with the residents and tell them some other private options they might have, um, that might be successful.
Right. Sheriff Davis?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I've had a lot of questions about calls for service at the Halifax apartment complex. And so I brought with me some numbers to answer those tonight. I have some board members back with questions, members from the community. So we're just going to go back ten years. So in the past ten years, it's been seven hundred and seventy-eight calls for service, either at the Halifax apartments or from the neighbors there calling about an issue related to those apartments. One thing I'd say is Halifax Drive is a nice community. Uh, people maintain their properties, they keep it up. It's a short street, except for the apartment complex. But one thing is unique about the apartment complex, despite the number of calls, it's not like it's one consistent person. There's a constant turnover of residents inside of that apartment complex. None of which long-term, they're constantly turning over. The people there this week may not be there next month. So that's what's unique about the apartment complex that appears to draw a constant stream of people who generate nine-one-one calls. So in a three-year period, there were three hundred and seventy-nine calls for service there. And I ran those numbers for the past twelve months from today, twelve months ago. Two hundred and two calls for service. But what's interesting for that, about half of those are self-initiated proactive policing calls where we initiated ourselves. In fact, we've not had a call for a criminal matter at the Halifax apartment since June the first. And that was a shots fired call. Since June the first, we have nearly thirty documented proactive policing encounters there at the apartment. But it's because of those thirty proactive policing encounters why we're not receiving nine-one-one calls. With that being said, we're spending a tremendous amount of time in the area focusing on Halifax apartments to try to prevent criminal activity. We've been successful, but we have other areas of the county we have to focus on as Of those calls over the past ten years, many of them have been serious calls. We've had shootings there, we've had overdose deaths, uh, stabbing relatively recently. So Halifax is a problem that we, from the sheriff's office perspective, will, to continue to work on with the assets we have available to us. So if anyone has any questions about the calls for service, I'd be glad to answer.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks, Sheriff Davis. So just, just to round it up, I can tell you for a fact, it's not that we're not trying to work on this problem. It's just every avenue that I go to, I hit a roadblock. You know, some way, somehow, I'm trying to get through the roadblock. Unfortunately, the government, things just don't move quick like we want them to move. Uh, and I, I don't know what else to say. You know, I'm, I'm doing, doing what I can do to try to help. And I'm sorry that it hasn't been taken care of, but, you know, my hands are tied. I can, I can only do what the ball allows me to do.
And I'd like to make a couple of comments. One, and could we, not just for this particular area, but could we look at some incentive programs? Because I think this is maybe not to this degree, but throughout the county, there are just some places that just don't look good. And they're not coming down quick enough, fast enough. And, you know, I wonder if we could look at some possible incentives, whether that's through grants, whether that's through, you know, other options as far as taxes or whatever to encourage folk to tear these places down so that people don't have to live in neighborhoods where they go and houses have trees and grass and falling apart. Uh, another question I would have is, could it, would it be possible, and it may have been done, I don't know, but to get Mr. Lozaro and neighbors, Lee Clark and his planning team, Sheriff Davis, uh, Mr. Bryant, get everybody together in a room together, sit and have a conversation. Because sometimes that personal touch and, you know, seeing and hearing people and getting the thoughts out there together, you know, may, maybe something could come together from that. Um, so I, I, you know, just two thoughts I wanted to throw out there because, you know, I, I feel your pain and I feel Mr. Bryant's pain because he, he does talk about this and he does work hard. But, you know, maybe time to get out of that box and look at some other options. And we may have to look at the ordinances and things that we have in place and are there any ordinances that we need to look at, adjust and change so that when things like this come up, you know, we can quickly act and make sure that, because we want to protect landowners and homeowners and, you know, entrepreneurs and all of that. But we also have to look at, you know, the impact that they have on their community and they have to make sure that they are taking care of their property. Um, and somebody mentioned, you know, you feel bad for the people who are living there. I feel bad that that's the only place they can choose. You, you know, and that, and that makes me feel bad that, you know, because if they could go elsewhere, they would go elsewhere because they, you know, if they could afford elsewhere. So ju- just some random thoughts, but the incentives, if that's an option, if that's something we can look into and then possibly look into getting Mr. Lozaro and all of the players involved in that and just have a face-to-face conversation, see where that goes.
Dr. Cobbly, you had indicated on another subject that you might want to address.
Yes, thank you. Uh, Ms. Allen, thank you for coming in tonight. Uh, I know you do live in my district and you live, uh, fairly close to where I live. And I just, uh, I'm getting a lot of questions about the broadband and about the internet. And, uh, I know that, Mr. Wagner, we are working hard on this. I did, I did ask, uh, Ms. Allen to come in and address not just me, but address the administration and the board on this to get updates. And again, because I do get a lot of questions about it and I continuously do. So, Mr. Wagner, would you please, maybe for Ms. Allen now, give her the best answer that you can give her? And this would also be an answer to a lot of other questions that are coming to me in my district concerning the broadband.
Yes, and we're quite frustrated with the speed at which the broadband project is taking place as well. We may recall, I mentioned a few times, that we ran into some regulatory issues early on in the project with getting, uh, permitting through the State Corporation Commission to delay the project at least six months. And ultimately, we're at the mercy of Appalachian Power and River Street Networks to build the network out. Uh, and I express my frustration with them quite regularly. And of course, they're not getting paid until it gets built. Nevertheless, we all want. And some good news, as my understanding communication from Appalachian Power, they have finally started construction in Henry County. Uh, so that was good news that they have started on it. Also got a letter of commitment from them to say, "We're going to move forward with this project and, uh, put our focus on it and expedite from this point forward." It may be appropriate, I guess, just to give you all an update and to, to give us all an opportunity in a public session to grill Appalachian Power and River Street Networks who are scheduled in at a future meeting. But, uh, trust me, we have been on there from the administration side. But, uh, I can say this for Ms. Allen, I can also say for the rest of our residents, if they want to reach out to our office, our information technology office at Administration Building, we can pull up their address to see what phase of the project that they're in as far as build out. So we can give them general terms if they're in phase one, two, or three, so that may make it some comfort. But, uh, the goal is to have this finished by the end of 2025. Appalachian Power and River Street's got a lot of work.
Is it safe to say that as we're moving forward and at the end of the project, that every resident in Henry County will have access to internet? Is that safe to say? That every resident will have access to internet?
So, so the grant will provide internet and service to, it's two phases. Phase one will provide services to those residents that have no access to broadband or anything.
Okay.
There are some limitations. If you live more than, uh, two thousand feet from the state right-of-way, then you chose to live two thousand feet off the state rattle right-of-way and, uh, it may be problematic to get into those businesses. But generally, the broadband project will provide that access to those. Phase two provides to those residents and businesses that may have internet but not very good. And, uh, the project includes three hundred and forty-six miles of fiber on Appalachian poles with, um, accessibility and granting it to, uh, over thirty-one hundred businesses or residents that currently do not have access to broadband. Uh, once that's been complete, between that option and other private provider options right now, every resident should have, uh, most every resident should have an option for broadband.
And I do appreciate what you said about our constituents and residents can literally call your office and their address. They can pull up their address with I.T. and get a more clear answer to, to specifically where they live.
Well, I don't, I don't think they'll get a very clear answer, but they will get an answer.
Okay.
Uh, because we don't have that detail of when it's going to be built out. We can tell them yes or no if they're included in the project.
Okay.
Uh, if they're in phase one, two, or three. And you may also notice that River Street Networks are running some advertisements on channels, uh, and some of the, run up TV stations as well. Where you can go to their website and put your name and address in and, uh, so they know that you're interested in the service. It kind of builds their database so when they get it to your neighborhood, they can reach back to you quickly. Uh, so that's an option. Uh, we haven't really publicized that locally because we would much rather have a timeframe of when that's going to occur before we put that out.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like.
Yes.
Um, I want to speak, uh, to the residents of, of Halifax. I think in, everyone on this board has seen these pictures and I think we fully understand the problem that you have. It is an eyesore. I don't think that anyone can disregard that. Uh, I know that Mr. Bryant, uh, over the years, has definitely talked with different board members about the problem and he's gone to the different, uh, uh, through administration to try to get something done. If you would, Mr. Anderson, if you have a copy of that petition that you could provide to the county administrator so he will have that for the file. And certainly, we won't stop at where we've left, when you leave this meeting tonight because I think, um, Mr. Bryant is very adamant about seeing something done. But, uh, please rest assured that you're not forgotten. It's just a matter of going through the proper legal channels in order to get something done, if we can get something done. And that's not a promise. The only promise I think that we could make you as a board is that we will do what we can to see if we can correct some of the problem.
One, one last thing. I would suggest that you do meet with Mr. Lyles, your community, and get this meeting up as soon as you can.
I guess, for me. What would be the definition of drug blight? I mean, what would be, what determines that? How many arrests? How many drug deals? How many, who determines that?
It's in the code. It, it's not, there's not like a, a specific number. Our ordinance is mirrored off, uh, what the state code says we can do, but you, you basically have to show a nexus between drug activity and criminal activity, uh, on a, over a period of time for.
So if there's no formula, how do we say yay or nay? Or can we?
I, I mean, I think what would happen is, I, I would want to feel comfortable. Before I go forward, I want to feel like, and he said he will resist, you know, he doesn't ad- admit it. And, um, and so I would want to feel that I have some evidence. But when I talk to the sheriff and he says, um, you know, "I'm in communication with my vice unit and there is no illegal drug activity," I mean, I, I, that's pretty much.
Okay. And I'm just asking like what?
There, there were the, the drug overdoses. I didn't, I saw them in the logs. I've reviewed the logs. I didn't know they were fatalities. You can't tell that from the logs. But, I mean, that, that'd be something, but you just, you really got to have some more.
Yeah, because I'm really asking from the standpoint of what would determine that? Because, I mean, we don't want them to have to deal with drug deals and violence and crime for something like this to happen. But, you know, it would be nice to know, is it two drug deals per week? Is it?
Right.
Three deaths? You know, what is it that determines that it's drug blight so that we all have some idea of, you know, hey, this is a situation of drug blight versus it's somebody's opinion and I, you know, we're not going to call it drug blight?
Well, ultimately, I mean, if we went to court and there, and the landowner was disputing it, we, I, I would, as, as you're a lawyer and we're trying to bring an action, I would feel like I've got to put on evidence of, you know, here's four or five transactions. Here's what, here's the gang graffiti on the wall. Here's, um, resident. Here's, um, residents who say they saw something.
And how much would you have to, what would you have to show the judge? For that judge to determine that it's drug blight?
You need to ask the judge.
I mean, I'm asking because I think that's important. Because I think that's important to know, because if we know that, then we have a formula and we can, you know, because obviously, somebody mentioned that people are moving in today and they're moving out next week. Sheriff Davis mentioned that. So if you get that time period where all of a sudden, seven drug dealers move in, hey, we need to be in court tomorrow. Because if that's what's going to happen, then, you know, we can, while that, all that action and activity is taking place, you know, we need to be ready to, to go. But that's just a question, you know, and it's not a challenge you, but, you know, we hear that, but if there's no clear definition, how do we determine what's drug blight?
One thing, it takes a long time to get an area considered as a drug blight area. It just don't happen overnight. It's years of accumulation of things that goes on.
So can we go back to the twenty-five-hundred cases over the last fifteen years and say that's, you know, it's drug blight?
Probably not.
And that's what I'm saying, like, what's, what's the formula? And that's just, you know, just a question, but, you know, we can talk about that later. But I do think it's important to know what that means and what would classify as drug blight so that if we know that, when we get to that point, we know, hey, we can take action now. And is it drug blight because sheriff has arrived through there every day and checked to make sure that drug deals are not taking place? He's doing a great job, you know, but, you know, it's costing him the resources, the manpower and all of that. So does that make it a drug blight situation because we're having to patrol so much to keep drug deals from taking place?
Other comments from the board? Okay. Mr. Wagner, do you have any other items that we need to consider before adjournment?
Yes.
Board members, do you have any other items that we need to consider before adjournment? If not, I will entertain a motion.
So, Lou?
Second.
We have a motion as second to adjourn. All in favor? It's five with one absent, Jennifer. Everyone have a good evening. Thank you for coming out tonight.